Well, the horizons, I lost my watch, so we got to be totally dependent on the horizon. We're in trouble, good to go. Hey, I have service, so I'm okay. Yeah, their map is red. So, we'll start the meeting this evening, we'll call it to order. Jessica, would you take a roll call, please?
Andrew Graybon.
Present.
Raymond Ponto.
Present.
Kent Miller.
Present.
Lee McMillan.
Present.
Tony Gangler.
Yes.
Matt Body.
Here.
Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Thank you. You can stand with me for the invocation of the Lord's Prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening and lift up our whole community to you and everyone who will be traveling next week for lovely holiday weekend that we have time to share with our family and friends and be with them and keep them safe on their travels and be with our law enforcement as their tough job continues to go on daily. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew, do you have anything at this time?
Um, well, we had a great concert on Thursday night with the Beloit Concert Series of pianist Tim Minn and did a wonderful job there. I also like to tell the high school students they did an amazing job with their three nights of their production in Culprun. So, it was well attended for all the events, I think.
Okay, I hear that. Tony? Raymond?
Hi, Matthew, Mr. Mayor.
Lee?
Nothing to say.
Granted, but, um, has already been said about the play and I also like to say about the Veterans Day Parade, I thought really went over well.
Victor, nice to see everyone turn on.
Beautiful weather.
Yeah, we were very fortunate with that. Man?
Yeah.
Thank you, Lloyd. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Veterans Day was a beautiful day and it was nice to see the veterans out and what's nice about this part of the country that we still love our vets and our flag and our country and that's, that's great. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you. Jason, do you have anything at this time?
Uh, yes, I can just give you guys a quick update on the water pilot testing going on. Um, currently they're tuning in the reverse osmosis portion of it, but at present the plan is taking in turbidity of roughly six to eight units, I guess if you will, into the, uh, the clarifying portion of it. Uh, you know, in comparison, I think that at the river, a lot of times we're, you know, fifteen to twenty, maybe up to into the thousands in turbidity. Uh, so again, consistent, nice product in and then basically with the ultra filtration, that second unit, for those of us that have been able to tour that, that second unit, the end product that that's putting out before it goes to RO, according to Jim, is putting out at turbidity of point zero one five, which I think, uh, if I remember what Jim said correctly, you know, currently our finished product coming out of this plant is like a point five. So, it, that's even before it goes in the RO, it's producing a very, very clean and then the bromides and what they really want to be able to tackle and take out, um, the way it's working, it's, it's doing a, doing a great, that's, there's nothing, there's no THMs being produced or whatever, uh, before they hit the pouring. So, basically it's working how they want it to so far, so now they're just working on getting, you know, testable data here for the duration and getting that, the reverse osmosis tuned in. Um, the solid waste contract is getting roughed out and I'll be, uh, going to Jamie to look at, so that will be coming back before you guys. A little update on the K-14 project that we're all patiently waiting for. Um, I did talk to Al Vogt, the contractor today, um, just to kind of voice some concern, but also just to get his story so I could understand what the, what the holdup is. And, uh, basically they're at the point where they have the grinding contractor coming in, um, Thursday, uh, to market and to grind it, uh, assuming no setbacks or breakdowns. Uh, so they're kind of at a catch 22 where, you know, they open it and they had to bring in temporary flaggers to flag it and it can be kind of a hassle. So, he said they're close enough now, you know, he said if it had been another month until we get those flag, until we get those grinders in, or three weeks and they probably just do the opening and do the flagging, but since they're so close to having them in here that if everything goes right, and I'll keep saying this every meeting, so I'm probably gonna stick my foot in my mouth again here, but according to him, out of horse's mouth, he's hoping Monday that it should be open. He's gonna have the signage company in here this, later this week at the same time to put in the permanent signs and do all that stuff, so that's kind of why he's saying, you know, I just like to do it all at once. And so, uh, we had a good conversation, um, uh, so I told him I'd just keep an eye on it Thursday, Friday, and hopefully I see something, if not, I'll give him a call, see where we're at. So, you know, we're working on that. Um, otherwise, uh, I guess I'll save the rest for, for later, but that was kind of the big thing right now, so.
Yes, and Tony? A week from today, the...
That's, yeah, exactly. Monday, yep, exactly, before Thanksgiving, I think that'll be the big thing. They have eight working days left in the contract. Fortunately, that takes until the 30th of November, but, you know, I don't think they're gonna have because of the Thanksgiving in there, but, you know, I think they want to get it done too. So, we had a good conversation, I mean, it was, it was productive and he's, he wants to get it open for us too, but he's kind of at that, you know, it's so close to when the contractor's gonna be there, it'd just be a bigger hassle, more expense to have to temporarily open it and flag it, but yet it's important to us as a community, that's what I relate to him, so.
Hey, have you heard anything back from our friends from the river? Just asking, I know what's...
No, that's fine, yeah, I, we did trade phone calls back and forth and so I have some voicemails that I need to respond to, to meet with them down here, but I also did talk with Susan Concanon about it and Elaine Bowers when we had the election little thing down here. So, I put the bug in their ear too, that might need their help to kind of leverage some of the powers that be and that seemed to be successful when we had a rough crossing in Iowa. So, um, it's definitely on my radar, but I don't have a solution yet. Tom, you know, as far as they, what they've said, they're, they were familiar with it, so they did call me back, but I could tell from the tone of the voicemail that they were like, oh, great, you know, here we go, but we're gonna, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it, keep pushing on it.
You're gonna pay over it?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Just to make their attention.
Uh, put some crossings. Yeah, we do have, uh, City of Wamigo did come and look at our pool a couple of weeks ago, just so you knew that, figured I'd be a feather or a cap, they were looking at putting a new pool facility in too and they wanted to look at ours and they really thought it was pretty impressive. Um, we do have, uh, the, if you didn't know, the Tree City USA is coming here, uh, in a couple of, in March, they have that first meeting tomorrow to talk about that, so that'll be a great, uh, event, you know, thing coming here to Beloit. Um, uh, for another thing to find your radar, I guess I'll just finish up here, the THM, you know, that letter we had to send out with the water, that's gonna be going out here on the 30th billing cycle, um, so just so you're aware of that, that's coming again. Of course, it's been going on for a while. Uh, we did have a little bit of setback with Dan Clarick, KDHE, he's not quite getting the data, how they'd like to see it, they're getting tired of the back and forth, so Ball's kind of in my court now, uh, to work with Mr. Brummer to get that, uh, in the correct format for them, so we can get it reviewed and we don't have to waste their time or our time and can get the process in place. So, um, we had that phone conversation late Thursday, so we're still working on that. I was a little bit disappointed with that, but we'll, uh, we'll get that tidied up. We have the benchmark, we have the data, but now we just have to make sure it's correct into them so that we can no longer have to send out this letter anymore, so that's, that'd be a big goal, put mine here shortly, so.
That's a lab. Okay? Well, thank you.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for the final hearing for the Housing Rehabilitation CDBG Grant. We will open that public hearing at this time. Is there any questions or comment about the Housing Rehabilitation Grant?
I'm Carol Porpleson, I worked with the city on this and I'd like to just take a moment, um, as part of, part of the final performance hearing, to let you know that when we started this project, we had estimated that we were gonna do 15 homes and demolish eight, and what we ended up doing was rehabbing 14 homes and demolishing 14 dilapidated unfit structures. Um, the grant was for $400,000 and an additional, um, over $52,000 was put in in matching funds that were provided by the city, um, as part of their, um, upfront match and then also I worked with Chris Jones to get some money to help with some additional demolition, um, rehabilitation program and also local property owner investment. What I brought with me is some copies, um, of just some of the data as far as the dollars that were spent and what was actually done, and I also brought some, um, pictures of the homes, homes that we did before and after, and I just wanted to pass these around and let you have a chance to look at them. If you haven't had a chance to drive around and if you guys could share that one and look at those, um, take a moment to do that because it is, some of them you can't tell a lot of difference, but others you can, um, as you can see by those pictures, depending on what needed to be done to the homes, um, if there was some exterior work or upgrades, you can see those, but if the homes were in a nice condition, you probably can't see what we did. Um, but that's just an example of what can be done with this project. I also included, included pictures of the demolition, so you can see what the structures were like before, um, that will be probably the last page, and then how those lots cleaned up, um, when they were done. Uh, that was just a few of them, that made a huge difference, um, in those areas. The other thing that I'd like to do is read to you a letter that I received, um, from one of the people that we worked on their house. It said, "Words are a little, are little in comparison to what to just, sorry, but just want to let you know how much I appreciate your efforts and what it's meant to me. The opportunity has been a godsend. I was financially overwhelmed with all the repairs this house needed and have no idea where to start or if to start. Your efforts gave me hope and direction where to go with the future. I put more, I put even more repairs in and can say I'm very proud of my home. Thank you for all you have done, not only for me, but for this community and the people who live here." Um, it's always nice to hear from the people that have the work done, uh, we don't always, and so I wanted to share that with you. Unless there's other public comments, that pretty much closes the public hearing, but I would like to thank the council, uh, the city staff, Heather Hartman with the Mitchell County Community Development Director, the appointed housing board members of Kent Miller, Andrew Graybon, Andrew Dimmerson. I want to thank you all for your role that you played throughout the project. It was a great opportunity for the city to assist property owners with revitalizing their homes and also to make great strides towards cleaning up the dilapidated properties. One more thing I wanted to give you was just a, this is kind of just an overview on the, um, the cost and the number of people that were helped through the project, just so you have an idea of where that money was and how it came about to be spent. I have had people ask me if the city would be willing to do it again, um, and I told them that we had some interest and so that would be, uh, something that probably would be talked about at a later date. The next opportunity that you could apply would be next August, um, so August of 2017, so.
I think it's a project we need to pursue and thank you and the planning commission for all that you've done to help move this forward to completion.
Well, it was, it was, um, interesting to, to say, working in a community where I knew everyone, normally I work in communities and I don't know the people, and so knowing the people that we were helping, um, it was just, it was just different, it was a different experience for me, but I did enjoy it and I think we should all be proud of what was done with the $450,000 that the city had access to as far as the work that was completed, so. There is, uh, closeout paperwork I left, um, over here for you that you'll need to sign as the mayor and then so she'll get your signature on that, so.
We'll get that to a conclusion for you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you. Is there any other questions or comment? Any other questions, we'll, uh, close our, uh, public hearing for the Housing Rehabilitation hearing. Next item on the agenda, since there's no public comment, was the consent agenda? Any questions or comments? If there's not, I approve, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
So moved.
Did you make that, Raymond?
Yes.
It's motion by Councilman Ponto that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Oddie. Any further discussion? No discussion. Uh, Jessica, would you take a roll call vote, please?
McMillan?
Yes.
Gangler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Body?
Yes.
Graybon?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the, uh, to approve ordinance 2196, the, the Hill Committee, uh, ordinance. Uh, we have some questions, Stephanie, are you representing them?
I am.
If you have any questions, we can kind of direct them to Jason or Stephanie on this. I'll pitch you under the...
Well, Heather wrote, or, uh, Katie wrote this, so.
Yeah, Katie wrote it. Heather. I'm sorry, Katie, did you...
No, I'm, I'm just the giraffe one, so I can't probably answer too many of your questions, so.
Okay, so, so is there any, any questions for our staff?
Motion to recommend the council per ordinance 2196.
The move by Councilman Graybon that we approve ordinance 2196, the Hill Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McMillan. Any further discussion?
Can we have a, just a synopsis for everybody in the meeting about what this Hill Committee is?
What was that?
Can we have, can we have, uh, explanation to, to these committees so that they know what this Hill Committee is?
Stephanie, you wanna address that for us?
I would love to.
She looks like she's prepared.
Give her something to do.
She's always prepared.
Um, we brought this, actually, they've kind of heard about this since last January. We ran it in front of the planning commission and began to talk about, um, a lot of the objectives that came from the conference of planning process and a lot of those dealt with, um, the public spaces, workplaces, um, green spaces and streets and sidewalks and pedestrian style, um, pieces and objectives from the plan. Um, so we looked about kind of the state of Kansas and nationally and there's a lot of these committees that are appointed to help move progress along on those objectives. Um, and so when we went to the planning commission, we kind of pulled out six or seven of the objectives that are straight from the conference of plan. Most of them deal with, um, pieces that are with the streets and the sidewalks and active transportation, um, but we also brought in the food piece because there's a lot of food work being done across the state and the nation. Um, and so that piece of it really, um, looks at what's going on regionally with food systems, um, distribution, local foods, producers that wanna, um, maybe produce local foods and sell in farmers markets or community gardens and aspects like that. So, those are the two pieces that the entire committee could encompass, um, and again, we just wanted to align, um, cohesively with what's happening with the city and work with the planning commission and the council to recommend strategies, policies, um, and projects that could enhance our way of life and quality of life to live a healthier life. Got that one?
Thank you. You like that one, do you?
You can edit it. Thank you guys for your support, though.
For what? And part, and part of this, I guess, for you guys to consider too, as you saw in the write-up, is if we do look for one, you know, city council member, so I guess be thinking, you know, probably have those appointees gathered up, but, you know, if you have an interest in serving on that and, and obviously it's, it's for, uh, two-year terms, so we'll be able to stagger that and move on, but yeah, Andrew might be a, be a great one. Okay, so we'll kind of mark Andrew down as the volunteer.
How many are there gonna be? Did I miss that?
Six to eight members.
Six to eight?
Yeah, six to eight.
That's not a lot, okay.
Yeah, six to eight members are gonna, uh, basically consist of myself, a city council member, somebody from the Mitchell County Regional Medical Foundation staff or, or board of directors, um, and then, you know, try to get an administrator from one of the local, you know, schools or the college, um, you know, one member from NCK aware of their, their group, and then, you know, one to three members at large as community members beyond that, you know, to kind of fill the roster and maybe on staggered two-year terms, so, yep.
Okay, no further questions? Jessica, would you take the roll call vote, please?
Gangler?
Yes.
Graybon?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Body?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda this evening is, uh, Resolutions, 2016, 17, of the Merle Farm Lees. Is, uh, any questions on this for your staff? It's, uh, I didn't get it. Was there anything in there on the pivot? Excuse me? You know, was there any language in there on the pivot that they put on there?
Well, it's not ours.
Yes.
Or does there need to be anything mentioned?
It's in there.
It's in there, okay.
Section eight.
Okay.
Well, but what, what does that say about the, the only thing I read in there was about how many acres of water they were allowed to use?
It just says they, they pay everything associated with irrigation, meaning they, they maintain the equipment that's there.
Okay, that's their center pivot.
Correct.
Correct. Put that in when the first year that they leased the ground. What happens down the road if they give up the lease or they no longer want to lease that property? Is it their responsibility to take out the center pivot or is it our responsibility to purchase the center pivot?
It's theirs, they're either gonna have to take it out or they could, they could even sell it to the next person, it's up to them.
Does that need to be in? I mean, just so everybody's on the same page.
Because they have the, they have the ownership.
That could be quite a lot of money involved.
I mean, I, I have in there that they pay all the fees and costs, I don't know, um...
Because it would be beneficial to us if it, I mean, it's not, would we be harmed by it?
I think it'd be beneficial to us plus beneficial to the next leaser, because it, I mean...
If it stayed there, you mean?
No, well, I mean, that's why they're leasing that ground for so much money is because the center pivot's on them. You know, if they decide not to lease that property, then my concern would be, okay, are they responsible for taking out the center pivot?
I think they would be...
Or is it our responsibility to purchase the center pivot from them and it stays with the property?
No, it's theirs, I mean, that's their property, they, they can do it.
Then, does something like that need to be in?
I can sure put that in there, but, yep, I can expand on that paragraph eight.
I mean, just to kind of clarify.
I wouldn't be surprised if the pivot's not leased. Yeah, outside of the...
Yep, I can do that. Anything else, question?
Anything else, remember? Annotation, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Miller, we approve resolution 2017, the Merle Farm Lees. Do we have a second? By Councilman Gangler. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Jessica, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Body?
Yes.
Graybon?
Yes.
Gangler?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Next item on the agenda this evening is, uh, Resolution 2016, 18, the fire truck lease.
Yeah, so this is the lease you guys have already approved, the bank just wanted it so that it had my name on it, I guess it was the previous administrator's name on there, so, just to match up their paperwork, so there's no changes beyond that, just a basic paperwork thing, I guess, so.
So, you're paying for it?
Yeah, exactly, that's what I didn't know, I was paying for it, but...
We might be receiving that next week, I heard.
Yes, it's really close, yeah, they're kind of, you know, a few odd new things trying to get right on the truck, but it's real close, so, yep.
Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Graybon, we approve Resolution 2016, 18, fire truck lease. Do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Jessica, would you take another roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Body?
Yes.
Graybon?
Yes.
Gangler?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Next item on formal, formal actions this evening, and this is what the revised agenda was for, is a Ponti Mental Health Proclamation, and I think Terry Bailey's gonna take... Bring us up this evening.
About a year ago, I found out there was a opening on the Ponti Mental Health Board of Directors, they have two people from each of the attendance counties. One of the, one of the things I get to do is appear before people like you guys and read a proclamation, have you signed it and whatnot, but this is their 60th anniversary. I was surprised, I know they've been around for quite a while. There's a lot of wearables, I have copies to give everybody, but, but, just real quick, uh, they were formed as, uh, sixty years ago on November 19th, 1956, is when it became, uh, an organization. Been a number of changes throughout the years, but, uh, the thing that I was amazed with is how much money goes into the services we're able to offer and every time the budgets get cut, that means something's gotta go. And a lot of their staff have worked for a number of years without any raises or increases and any benefits and things like that, so, uh, they have a pretty loyal group of people that work in, uh, I said at some point, hopefully things will get better, but, you know, we never know. So, uh, there's a, the proclamation is that, "City of Beloit does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2016, as the 60th anniversary of Ponti Mental Health Service and congratulate it for its service, calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to increase awareness and understanding of the prevention, treatment and recovery from substance abuse, mental disorders and the strengthening of the wellness of our community."
Thank you.
Soon as you will proclaim that, silently or out loud. Uh, you got that one, okay?
There you go.
All right.
We thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
That's a nice thought that you're supposed to do.
It's a, uh, it's a tremendous organization, you know, it is, once you get involved in things, you see all the stuff that's going on that you don't notice going on otherwise.
So, usually an eye opener, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a wire bid from Chris Davis, an amount of $6,510. Any questions?
Does that not include the reactive on?
Uh, I was told it didn't have to be active.
Okay, maybe it shouldn't be, I understand that.
Yeah, well, come in late, you know, but we just kind of worked it in this evening. Any, if there's no questions on the wire bid, I entertain a motion for approval. The move by Councilman McMillan that we approve the wire bid from Chris Davis for $6,510. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gangler. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda this evening is the cancellation and release agreement with David Kohler. If you, if we have any questions on this? Jason, you have any comments?
No, I mean, basically, uh, it was up to us to get all the materials as much as that we could get off of the site and Ronnie had completed that a couple of weeks ago and then we sent the notice to Mr. Kohler's attorney and so I guess we're all in agreement that we're ready to make formal action, I guess, and there's no comments.
Yeah, we had, um, we discussed this a couple of times in, um, closed session, but we'd communicated back and forth by letter, essentially kind of formalizing what, what was going on, um, and his attorney just requested kind of a formal cancellation, um, so this just says, "We retain the money that he has paid, um, and that we've removed all the equipment." There is, you will still see some equipment out there, but Ronnie's using that for other using that for other purposes, um, so whatever's not being used has, has been recovered by us. So this just cancels everything, and there will be no further, um, action taken one way or the other on this agreement, so.
Any other questions? No further questions, I move for approval of the Kohler agreement. The move by Councilman McMillan that we approve the Kohler agreement, that's a second.